Tonight's workshop, we'll start off with a roll call. This is Ray Weldy. If we want to go down the line, one by one.
Deb Kaplan.
Deb Shannon.
Kim Kutsaradis.
Joe Gatto, you here?
Yep, Joe Gatto is here. Sue?
Okay.
Is Sue in?
Sue Cummings? I don't see her icon either.
She's in here.
Oh, Sue's here. Thank you. Uh, who else I see? The Chief, Chief of Police, Matt Gilbert, Public Works Director, Mark McDonald.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Mr. Gatto, would you like to begin?
Sure. Before I kind of pass it around, well, actually, I'll do a few of the departments. I got some information. This morning, we had the Commissioner, Bucks County Commissioners Meeting with the managers. So I'll go over some highlights that was discussed there. As far as at the county level, they're going to be rolling out a small business program grant. Um, probably the grant funding will probably be around six million. They're going to be following up on the Chester County model, but the individual businesses would need to supply financials. It would not include no franchisees types or no passive businesses like realtors or real estate investments. And the grant, the small grant program would be up to 25,000 per business. So that's something that they want to roll out. They spoke about their economic recovery task force and basically how businesses would operate under the governor's yellow format and whether businesses can legitimately make revenue under that model. Not all businesses would be able to open under the yellow face, according to the commissioners. Also, the commissioners are waiting for a call for the governor's office and the Department of Health this week. So hopefully, they get a little bit more guidance on whether or when they can open up their Bucks County. Um, I believe also, they mentioned on Sunday, the Department of Health had their first zero spread so far this week, and they're only in single digits as far as community spread. So that appears to be good news. And also, as far as the Department of Health, I believe his name, his last name is Damsker. Uh, he mentioned the fact about camps can eventually be held, he thinks, but it would be after the Fourth of July, approximately mid-July. But there, of course, there would be restrictions, and the county's trying to develop these restrictions or policies in consultation with the state. So hopefully, that'll be a positive thing for Matt potentially. As far as elections, they're encouraging mail-in ballots, and like I said, approximately about 50,000 are being mailed out, and I believe it's going out this week. All precincts, it says, will be, will be open. They'll be doing a spraying in, let's say, municipal buildings first, eventually getting to churches, firehouses, and then I believe last to schools since nobody's in there. Um, they will be using a hydrogen peroxide spray, I believe, and supposedly, uh, Ray, I don't know, let's say it this way, if I'm pronouncing the gentleman's name, Mr. Freitag or Freitag?
Freitag.
Freitag, I'm sorry. Actually, sat in while this was being sprayed, and he was not really affected at all by this. So, you know, the chemical does kill the, the virus, but it's not really impacting an individual. Um, also, they mentioned the sheriff and the prethonitaries office, they're currently open, but it's only by, by appointment right now. They're saying masks should be worn unless you have a doctor's note for a medical condition if you're entering the building. And that's how they would handle the election too, also.
Joe, as far as the election goes, if I could just pop in for one second, you had mentioned a request that had been made to the county to relocate the 1500 Desire Avenue polling place to the old district court building, and originally, it was turned down. Is that still the case?
Nope. Actually, we were successful in getting that done. I spoke to Mr. Bobby Eva. Um, he came out. I mentioned the conversation with the one commissioner. So we were able to get it done where the old district court would now be used for that particular polling division. So right now, that place has been cleaned out, cleaned, and then the, the county, basically, would be coming in with that peroxide machine and cleaning it further. So that should be enough, and we'll put signage up in front of the building directing people to go to the district court for voting.
Okay, and we, we did that to limit exposure to the, from the township building for employees into the public, right, and to have it at a separate place?
Absolutely, yep. Absolutely. No problem. Thank you. So I'm glad we were able to get that done because I was a little nervous about that part. And then in talking with Jeff, Jeff had some information he wanted me to communicate with you. Um, he's basically saying the, they're fully processing permits, including UNO permits. There was a small backlog, doing, of course, being closed down for a little while, but they're moving the permits as quickly as possible. Permits may be dropped off at the drop box or mailed to the township building. He said arrangements can be made to drop off or pick up large plan sets at the township building. He said construction permits are still required as usual. He said he doesn't really want to see the excuse that you're being the regular process. He said there's no waivers being granted on securing permits because of a temporary shutdown. Plan reviews and inspections are being done by our third-party inspection service, so that, that has recently started up. And then as far as the planning commission and the zoning hearing board, he's saying due to the nature of the public needing to be involved in a real-time basis, he's suggesting that, that they probably won't have any meetings until probably the end of June or after. So that's something that Jeff and in the zoning office wanted me to convey.
Just so the board knows, there's certain deadlines that aren't waived unless the applicant agrees, and you have to have hearings. I tell, I emailed Jeff today advising him that I know multiple townships are having Zoom zoning hearing board meetings. So when we have deadlines, we may have to do that.
And that, and I think as far, I did hear one other township did that in Bucks County. Um, I didn't know, Frank, that there was a couple that have done that, but I did hear at least one that actually have done that. So that's something we could work on and make sure we're compliant. Um, as far as the, the chief, do you want to jump in real quick if there's any comments? Chief Krimmel? Okay. Not a problem. Um, as far as Matt, did you want to discuss any things real quick?
Yep. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So just a couple of quick updates. Um, all the township parks still remain closed under the red phase. That is to include the athletic fields, sport courts, like basketball courts and tennis, our playgrounds, our skate parks, and the rest. Even once we transition to the yellow phase, those amenities will remain closed throughout the park system, with the exception of the walking trails, which are open to the residents currently, and they're asked to practice social distancing while using the walking trails throughout the Play Wiki Farm and Russell Elliott Memorial Park. Joe touched on it briefly with David Damsker and Bucks County Department of Health not yet advertising any guidelines for us to create a newly structured program. The PRPS, which is the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society, have released guidelines, although they're not exactly what is going to be enforced. They're good guidelines to give us direction, and I don't know if anybody saw them, they were recently released. I heard they turned it up on Facebook.
We can supply, we can supply that to the board. That's not a problem. We can scan that over.
But again, these are not adopted by the CDC. They're not adopted by the Department of Health. So it would be hasty to restructure a program as large as ours based on these guidelines and then have a slight change even could significantly impact the way that we intended to operate. Just so you guys are aware, we're in touch with a lot of the residents. A lot of them are expressing that the Parks and Recreation Department has never been more essential at a time like this. Parents presuming that they will go back to work in the green phase are hoping that we're able to provide the service for our summer camp programs, and those who aren't returning to work will still look recreation throughout the township park system. We're looking into many options as to how we can feasibly operate under these conditions. Some are to include building UV sanitation boxes, so secured box, which would have a rack system inside of it and then close for a set period of time, 10 minutes or 15 minutes, depending on the bulb strength, which would sanitize any type of arts and crafts equipment, such as markers, those type of things. Also, we would use it on all the sports equipment. Anything that would be considered to be shunned and then shared by another group or individual at the camp, we're looking into ways of feasibly and safely sanitizing them. Right now, the biggest Everybody there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, the biggest, the clarification and definition we're looking for in the Department of Health guidelines, they're, the PRPS guidelines refer to active use zones, not exceeding 25 people, but they don't define what an active use zone is. So the, obviously, it's, it's open to interpretation, and in no way would we try and exploit any loopholes. We just want to get that from the Department of Health, who would be the one to enforce those guidelines, just to make sure that we are above board, playing by the rules, and completely compliant with all requests. We already know it's going to include signage. It's going to include sanitization. It's going to include a different standard operating procedure for our employees and our patrons. So once they're released, I'll have more information for everyone, you know, especially the residents, so they know how to safely use the parks. I don't know if anyone had any specific questions for me about that, but to tell you the truth, I don't have very specific answers.
Well, I appreciate the update, Matt. Thank you, and all you've done.
Yeah, we're trying. A lot of folks are really anticipating this to transition yellow to green quickly and put us in a, in a position a little closer to back to normal.
Well, we, we have no timeline on that. We're still in the red.
Unfortunately, there is no timeline yet, no.
Right. So we don't know how long it's going to take to get to the yellow, to the green. So when we're in yellow, that's 25 is, is the largest we can have.
It would In talking to a lot of my colleagues, and I've participated in numerous Zoom meetings throughout Parks and Recreation Professionals in the, in the Commonwealth, and operating in the yellow would be more for childcare centers, whereas summer camp and that nature of recreation is slightly different. It would be, it would be extraordinarily difficult to operate in the yellow. In the green, there is feasibility there and staying within the guidelines. I, it would be cost prohibitive to operate in the yellow. I can just tell you that now.
And I, I would think there would be a point in time too, that we're, you know, even if we do have the, the pool open, so to speak, and providing to the residents sort of a daycare type scenario, um, there may be, if we're going to be doing it in the middle of July, we may, Matt, have to give back your initial contributions or payments that you have received, and that may have to be refunded, you know, maybe as, as of even at the next board meeting.
I was, I was, I was going to
Then we would have, then we would have to change the paradigm on what we want to charge, basically, if you, if you run a shortened type of pool program hypothetically.
I, and, and I was going to bring that up. I was sort of going to close with that. Um, in, in the current environment, we have already received a few, and when I say a few, I, I mean, under, under 10, uh, requests for refunds for folks who have already registered their campers. They don't feel comfortable sending their children into an environment like a summer camp setting during these times, and I can, you can't disagree with them. So I, I think a refund, right now, the current refund policy states there are no refunds.
Yep, and that's actually going to be in the manager, that's, I think, referenced in the manager's report too, Matt.
I could touch on it again during that time if anyone needs any clarification, but my request would be for a change in that no refund policy. So the folks who have zero intention of sending their children to the program that could receive their money back and more than likely make a space available for somebody who needs that level of care.
That's fine. Thank you, Matt.
Hey, Matt, have you, have you done any analysis on what kind of income you need to have in order to run the program? I know there's a bunch of other issues, but this is strictly a financial question.
It's, it's hard to answer with the unknown overhead of signage is relatively inexpensive. Uh, it would come down to labor and the sanitization product itself are, are quite expensive. And you also need to be trained and understanding of how to properly use that product. I wouldn't rely on any of our junior staff, meaning camp counselors or lifeguards, to carry out such important tasks such as proper sanitization. So it, it would have to be someone in a, you know, a professional trained caliper to carry out those tasks. To, to specifically answer your question, yes, I've looked into it. It's not cheap.
Well, do you, do you have any feel for what the difference is between what you, what you have so far, what you anticipate based on the cost that you do know?
Well, again, particularly with summer camp, our costs are relative to attendance. There's a ratio from campers to counselors, and moving forward, it would ultimately come down to what is defined as an active use zone. Uh, I could divide the Dolphin Swim Club into 10 active use zones, um, based on square footage. Are they going to consider that to be 10 use zones at one facility, or anyone who walks through the gate is now an inactive use zone? Uh, I don't know the answer to that question. So it would, it's, it would depend on our enrollment. The costs will be relative.
How about, how about Fertabar? Is there any, anything going on?
I've not received anything formal from the Shamany School District, because before this began, I'd already had an approved usage for the Fertabar Elementary School, the pool, the playground, the basketball courts, and had a meeting with the facilities department, the principal of Fertabar Elementary, and it was an approved use back in January when I submitted it. At this time, I've not received a formal rescinding of that approval, but I've heard through the grapevine that the Shamany School District facilities will be closed to everyone except staff and, and maintenance staff. I do not anticipate the use of Fertabar, no.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And, and again, if that changes, they may allow us to use it. I know all of the Shamany School District facilities, not just their elementary schools, get a decent amount of use through the summer with different programs, and even once the students come back who are involved in fall sports, that's typically sometime in August. So I, I have not heard anything as exactly how they, they will set their policy, no.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt. Um, Ryan, did you want to discuss any things on your operations?
Um, I've been sending you guys the emails. Everything's the same there. We did have a, one of the perdem's today, did, while eating lunch, one of the parking lots saw a fire and was able to get the residents out of their house, even though the fire was in the shadows, about 15 feet away from the house. So he was able to get the resident out, and we were able to get the fire out pretty quick without any issues. Um, other than that, we started the food drive today. There's a couple of bags in there. We're doing it every day, Monday to Friday, eight to four. Uh, other than that, that's all I got.
Where's that located again, Ryan? The, the food?
Yeah, 1500 Desire Avenue, be outside of the courthouse. There's two green recycling bins, and the residents can put everything inside the bins.
And they'll be taken in every night, and Ryan and his crew, they, they will wipe it down and put it into another bin. So to make sure the product before it even gets to the, to the various food entities that it's already cleaned up. So, Ryan, also, do you want to mention too about the starting of the inspection phase?
Yes. So Monday, we started the fire inspections back up. We're more focusing on everything, the essential businesses that have been open. Um, I think we got into about 15 of them so far, the last couple of days. Um, all notices were, were sent out, so we'll be hitting them daily.
Good. Thank you, Ryan.
Okay.
All right. So it seems right now that it's, I believe it's Bristol as far as and as lower south that are currently the two fire marshal entities that are, that are actively doing the inspection component. So hopefully, in the future, the, the other townships will pick that, pick that up too. But Ryan, Ryan and his crew are doing it in a safe and a professional manner. So that's good. Um, I, I think that's all we have as far as our discussion, unless the board has any questions they, they want to ask the department heads.
Mark, if Mark's here, I just was curious, you know, we had discussion maybe a month ago about grass cutting and should we do it, shouldn't we do it, and so forth. Is everything up to date as far as grass cutting goes at the parks and township property?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, yeah. Well, you know, I only have five or six men a day, but we're out cutting grass every day as much as we can. We're staying on top of it as best we can. Uh, we, we've been cleaning and disinfecting the administration of police, the public works building daily. We've been doing the sewer pump stations, the pay one calls daily, and any sewer calls from residents. And as Joe mentioned, we, we cleaned, we emptied all the recycling carts out of the old courthouse. A couple, few hundred of them. We're storing them in the public works yard, and we cleaned that up as best we can in preparation for, for the primary election day. And, uh, we check the forks every day to make sure, to put the caution tape back around the playgrounds. But, uh, we're getting the grass cut as best we can. We're doing okay.
And that's with the complement of the five, that's with the complement of the five individuals right now. So this is the, this would be the last week where we have the five.
And the mechanics are coming in, doing what's needed. They pretty, they've been in every day, or at least half a day, every day, the whole time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
I have a, I have a question for Matt. Uh, Matt, Eddie News, how's the Love Grows going? Anything going on with that? Is everything the same, or?
They're still operational. They're, they're considered essential, and, you know, while we don't have any current farmer's market, there was a plan to, to do an at Play Wiki with just the Love Grows vendor. Um, right now, it, essentially, it's, it's kind of in a holding pattern.
I know we talked in the past about, um, talking to them about doing some kind of mural or something on those, um, big, uh, I don't know.
Containers.
The shipping is
Has any progress been on that?
I think that the, the, they were going to block it with some planting, like some tall sunflowers, uh, which, which to my knowledge have been planted. I should be sprouting up soon here with the nicer weather.
Yeah, but that's not really going to do much for the
That's to be very tall sunflowers.
Do you know what I mean? I, I don't see how that's going to improve. The containers.
Well, we'll, 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 we'll look further into that, Deb, and, and get back to you on that. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll have that conversation and see what they actually planted and when it should be sprouting up, or if they have to repaint their, their containers into some different color that's more, more natural.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Yep, sure thing.
Well, it's 7:26, unless, uh, I don't have anything further on my side.
Okay. Does any other board members?
Frank has something. There was discussion about this resolution for the tax relief, and, um, it's 2%, not 10%. And also, um, we're doing it uh, different than the county, which is, I misunderstood. And there's also the issue of the refuse collection fee, which is included with the taxes for which the tax collector gives a 2% discount, and Joe has said that's not his understanding.
Yeah, what, what actually, what the issue is, Frank, on that is your real estate taxes are ad valorem taxes. Your refuse fees is what it is, a fee. It's not an ad valorem tax, so you can't really discount it. So
I know that, but the tax collector apparently has been doing that.
I spoke to her, this tax collector, all I'm saying is, is this particular individual, um, the current one, is saying that's not the, that's not the case. She actually agreed with what, with what I said. So my, I think what is being lost in the translation is that if you're doing the, let's say, the, if the face component were to expand to a future date, you need to conclude the refuse component, the refuse fee with it, so that the penalty part doesn't start. And that's where you get the 10% penalty kicking in, where, let's say, the 300 is what we typically charge for the refuse fee. So that's probably where you, somehow that 10% creeped into that thing. I have no idea how that got here. But as far as the 10% penalty, that should be in there, and your, your real estate bill, or let's say, your refuse fee component is 300. If you don't, do not pay it in a timely manner, the penalty would be 10%. So it would be $330. So what we need to do right now is make sure it's correct, whether we're extending the discount period, or we're just simply extending the face, the face period tonight.
Okay. I just want the board to look at and understand what they're passing tonight because there's, there was a bunch of confusion this afternoon.
So tonight's resolution then is the new resolution that we got immediately before this meeting, right?
Well, I, I got to open it, and I just, we'll have to, we got to make sure we read it, and it's correct. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want to make sure the language marries up one another, and basically, if we're extended the face period, we got to also extend the face period on the refuse fee side too. So it, it, it marries up with the date and time.
Okay. Thank you, Frank.
All right. We're at seven, we're at 7:30, so.
We ready to go?
Yep.
Yep.
So we want to transition to the regular meeting, correct? Everyone's good with that?
Sounds good, sir.
Yeah.
We're up and going on again?
What was added?
We gotta, we gotta get out and come back on again.
No, no, you're good. Just stay with us. Don't run away. Okay, here it goes. It's 7:30 PM. This is Raymond Weldy, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the May 13th, 2020, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Public Meeting, a virtual meeting held by teleconference. If everyone would please rise so that we could do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, we have some announcements to make. On May 4th, 2020, last Monday, the board met in a special executive session at the Lower Southampton Township Building and also via teleconference to discuss some personnel issues as it relates to the township's current financial situation. Again, that meeting was held on May 4th, 2020, last Monday at 5:30 PM. Uh, tonight, the board met at 6:15 PM in executive session. Tonight's executive session again was a discussion about personnel and also about the township's financial status as it relates to personnel. I believe Mr. Mr. Gatto will have a synopsis about that in his manager's report. Immediately after that, the board met in a work session that began at approximately 7:00 PM. Tonight's work session conduct, consisted of a discussion about a county commissioners meeting that was held and some information about a small business county commissioners meeting that was held and some information about a small business program grant for six million dollars that would be handled through the county. Um, the different phases, the projected phases of opening um, in Bucks County, um, the latest statistics on COVID nineteen uh, new cases. And also the upcoming primary election to be held on June second, two thousand twenty. And one of the discussions that came out of that is uh, the township had made a request to the county board of elections to shift the polling place fifteen hundred Desire Avenue Township Building to fifteen hundred Desire Avenue, the old district court building. And that was to um, keep the flow of people in and out of the township building um, out of there and into a different building so that it exposed people to township employees and township employees to people coming in to vote. That request was approved by the Bucks County Board of Elections. So uh, the June, June second primary uh, polling place will be at the old district court building. The building will be set up, there'll be plenty of signage and uh, uh, cleaning supplies uh, for people to remain uh, safe. We also spoke about uh, the zoning department. The zoning department is processing permits as we speak and also use use and occupancy inspections. And you can drop your permit requests off at a drop box at the township building outside. If you have large plans to drop off or pick up, you can call and make arrangements to have that done. We also spoke about the meetings for the planning commission and the zoning hearing board. And there's a possibility that there will be no meetings until the end of June. Uh, we spoke to our solicitor about time requirements on that. And it may be necessary to hold some teleconferencing meetings so that we abide by the time requirements as specified by law. We spoke to the Parks and Recreation Department, uh, the park trails as most people are aware are still open at Russell Elliott Memorial Park and Play Wiki Farm. And we had a discussion about uh, uh, what could happen with summer camps this summer and contingency plans that uh, could be put in place um, in the event that the, we're unable to open or accept uh, children into the camp program. We really don't know right now, so we'll play that by ear. Um, the other thing that I wanted to announce is that um, based on the executive sessions that we had on May fourth and again tonight, the township is in, um, as everyone is in dire financial straits. Uh, we were informed at the executive session that the latest unemployment statistics in Lower Southampton, there are approximately three thousand three hundred township employees, township residents, I'm sorry, that are unemployed as of right now. And the township's unemployment rate stands at sixteen point five percent. The township finances have taken a severe hit during this this shutdown. Um, the earned income tax and the burst business mercantile tax took a huge hit in the month of, in the month of April. Um, based on that, I'm sorry. Based on that, um, I've made the decision and I informed um, the administrative secretary um, at the township, um, yesterday I dropped off a letter um, to give to the human resources and the finance director. I'm electing not to take any pay for the rest of the year. I return my May paycheck um, and any paycheck that um, I would receive as a supervisor for the remainder of two thousand twenty. Um, I would rather that go into the township fund um, because we're in dire financial straits. And although supervisors don't make a boatload of money, every little bit helps. So uh, moving forward from there.
If I can say something, Ray, I will, I will also um, do that as well.
Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Okay, then Ms. Kaplan made the announcement to do the same thing. And uh, if there's next up on the agenda would be public comment. Um, public comment, um, as in the other teleconference meetings was um, advertised to be accepted uh, via electronic communication. If I can check with the administrative secretary or with Mr. Gatto, was there any, anything that needed to be read into public comment for tonight?
I'm not aware of any as as of this time, no.
I just checked, uh, there are no public comment for tonight.
Okay, there being no public comment, uh, we'll move into the consent agenda, which is item one on tonight's um, agenda. The consent agenda consists of item one A, approval of minutes, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty. Item one B, approval of accounts payable, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Item one C, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Item one D, ratify approval of accounts payable, May sixth, two thousand twenty. Item one E, ratify approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, May sixth, two thousand twenty. And item one F, approval of second cash escrow release to Mark Hanson in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred and four dollars and fifty-two cents for a project located at two eight two eight Creek Road. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion. Ed Shannon.
Mr. Shannon, thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second that, made by Mr. Kutsaratus.
Mr. Kutsaratus has seconded it. Um, if we can, we'll go down in order like we did at the last meeting. We'll do a roll call vote since we're holding this via teleconference. Uh, so first, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and this is Ray Weldy. I vote in favor of that motion. Motion passes with a vote of five zero. Item two, consider adoption of resolution two thousand twenty dash seventeen, implementation of Act fifteen property tax relief provisions. If I can preface that just briefly, I'll turn it over to uh, Mr. Gatto and our, and or our solicitor, uh, Mr. Dillon. The township has had discussions and we had discussions um, prior to the last meeting about trying to offer um, some type of property tax relief to our residents in this time of financial dire straits. Um, and we had thirty days to come up with some type of resolution um, where we could do something. So if I could pass it off to Mr. Dillon, um, Mr. Dillon could outline for us what the plan is for tonight with the resolution?
Well, um, I'm looking at the resolution as it's in its last draft form. And uh, I want to make sure the board is, understands what we're proposing here. We have, there's normally a two percent discount. Um, and I believe it was the decision of the board to extend the two percent discount for payment of Lower Southampton Township taxes uh, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Is that what the intention was?
Yes, it was, it was, it, the the intention was to extend the period for sixty days from April thirtieth to June thirtieth.
Well, the resolution, which was just circulated, propose, uses the term assessed value of real estate and and the refuse collection fee. We, we had a discussion i- in the work session that uh, I think Mr. Gatto had discussions with the tax collector. And and it's my understanding that's the intention of the board, that the two, that the um, the two percent discount rate apply only to the real estate taxes and not to the refuse collection fee. So uh, I, I know Chris had discussions with that and she probably didn't hear our earlier discussion that uh, Mr. Gatto has had discussions with the tax collector. And she understands uh, that there can be a separate billing for the refuse collection fee. So uh, the stipulation or the resolution that was circulated, I think in the now there for first paragraph, oh, we'll collect the taxes imposed on the assessed value of re- of real estate taxes and and the ref, the next phrase, and the refuse collection fee should be strict, should be stricken. Um, and however, and then the the next paragraph refers to waives any penalties, the late payment penalties uh, through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And I believe it's from my discussions with the board that you want the waiver of the penalty through July thirtieth, twenty twenty, to apply to both the real estate uh, taxes and the refuse collection fee. Is that what the board wants?
Well, that, that would be for both the real estate taxes for the portion that goes to the county and the portion that goes to the township, correct?
We cannot waive the, the, we cannot change the county's discount period.
No, no, this is just the extension for the, for the penalty period.
The penalty period, we can't change what the count, I I believe the county has implemented July thirtieth. But that's their determination, not ours. We, our resolution applies only to our taxes and our refuse collection fee.
Correct. I, I think what the county actually has done is they extended the face, the face period to seven thirty. Then the penalty period would be at seven, uh, seven thirty-one.
Correct.
That's what I believe the county has done.
You're right.
I believe that as well.
So in summary, I think the resolution will be reworded, but what we're saying is uh, the discount will be extended through June thirtieth. That applies only to the real, Lower Southampton Township real estate taxes. And the waiver of the pen, penalty period will be extended to July thirtieth. Is that, is that the intention? Did I state that properly, Joe?
Uh, I.
Why don't you restate it? Make sure we got it the way you want it.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little hard, this one. All right, so I mean, if we're doing the two percent discount, so we're running it from April thirtieth to June thirtieth. Uh, so then the face period then would then take over. So your, your, your face component, you would have go to, I believe, seven thirty. And then at seven, seven thirty-one is when a penalty phase would be solely on the real estate tax part as well, as well as the refuse fee part. If it's after the seven thirty-one.
Right.
Okay.
Well, hold on, I thought it was up to seven thirty and then it's, right? And then it starts at seven thirty-one. Does that, did I understand? Yes, okay.
Yes.
So I, I think if the board, if the board is intending to do the two percent discount or the face, um, uh, that's a decision you guys have to make. Um, as far as the implementation, I mean, uh, if we're solely doing the face part, we just basically have to have the language on the real estate tax, uh, face value going to seven thirty. The penalty phase would be kicking in on seven thirty, seven thirty-one. And the one thing you need to know is on the refuse fee, since that's not an ad valorem tax, that is a, just a fee in itself, that cannot be a discounted feature. So they, that would have to be paid at the three hundred dollar level. And if it goes to the penalty phase, it goes to three thirty.
So, so if I can summarize, Frank and Joe, tell me if this is correct. We would need a motion then to adopt resolution two thousand twenty dash seventeen, which would offer a two percent discount period um, for township real estate taxes only until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And the face period for township and county real estate taxes would be extended until July thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Well, except our resolution doesn't mention county taxes. They mentioned, that's their separate motion.
Not the, not the county, correct?
Is this a, or is it, is it a uh, um, a penalty that isn't going to be paid? I'm a little under, not, not understanding this.
The, the penalty period will begin on, on seven thirty-one for the real estate taxes and for the refuse collection fee.
Which are township specific.
Correct.
It's a discount only, there's nothing, it's a, you know, hmm. Let me get, let me get my thoughts right here. Is it a discount? Or is it, or is there a penalty?
It's a discount, discount is a two percent, two percent discount, Ed. Um, the penalty only kicks in as if on seven thirty-one and that's a ten percent and that's by law. The ten percent.
Okay, so, so we're discounting everybody's uh, real estate taxes by two percent and.
No, if, if they pay them by June thirtieth, they get a two percent discount.
Okay. All right. Well, do we know what that is by any chance? How much hours that is that we're gonna have to uh, um?
Well, we, we currently have it through April thirtieth, that's what the, what was provided. We're extending the discount to June thirtieth due to the current circumstances.
And this was authorized by.
The vast majority of the real estate taxes that does come in, Ed, is coming from uh, let's say your mortgage firms or your mortgage companies that are paying on behalf of the, the average resident. So they have already, for the most part, have come, have come in. They take advantage of the discount period because they have to.
Right.
And, and we're permitted to do this by the Senate bill that was passed and the governor signed immediately preceding our last meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a reduction in our revenue.
It's a, it should be a slight impact, but it's, it's also offering help to the, to the residents in, in the meantime by extending it out to June thirtieth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
So we need.
Any other questions? Any other questions, Sue or Kim, or Deb?
No.
No.
No. I'm, I'm, I'm all for giving people two more months to possibly get that discount. That's, that's fine by me.
Great.
So the, the motion is to adopt the resolution as restated and will we, it'll be, the document will be reworked and circulated for signatures.
Okay, so we would need a motion then to adopt resolution two thousand twenty dash seventeen, the implementation of Act fifteen property tax relief provisions as restated by our solicitor. And then um, reworded for the board to sign should it be passed as our emotion to do that.
I'll make that motion, that Kaplan.
Thank you, a second?
Susan Cummings, I'll second.
Thank you, and we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and this is Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So uh, uh, that motion would pass for resolution two thousand twenty dash seventeen with a vote of five zero. Thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda, item three, consider adoption of resolution two thousand twenty dash eighteen, accepting the offer of dedication of a certain zero point one two, twelve hundredths of a parcel of land along State Road two zero four three, which is Brownsville Road. And I believe we, this was brought up at a previous meeting, um, uh, some old uh, property that had to be uh, dedicated, um, where the bridge is going to be reconstructed.
Correct, and that, the, the resolution should be point one two acre parcel of land. And it's, it's as you come out of Middletown into Lower Southampton, across the Nishamany Creek on the right-hand side of the road. The property was offered for dedication to the township approximately twenty years ago. It was never acted upon. As this project developed, the state did the research and came, came to us and asked us to adopt this resolution so that the ground will be available to them as part of this project.
Okay, and I believe we had previous discussion on this at our, or discussion at a previous meeting. Um, I don't know if the board has any questions on that dedication?
Yeah, Ray, I uh, I had spoken to Frank and to Joe about this earlier today. And uh, obviously this ground does have some value. We don't really know what. I don't know how far we want to take it with the, with the state because they could just always, you know, seize the property, enament domain, but I would like to try to get as much as we possibly could for it. Mr. Gatto also agreed that, you know, they better work out the best number for the township for uh, for that parcel that we have.
I, yeah, I don't have any problem with that, especially considering the financial state that we're in.
Exactly.
Yeah. What would be the best way to move forward with this and Frank and or Joe is to dedicate it and then negotiate with the state over the value?
There, yes, they're, they're going to, we're gonna accept dedication. We have to record the document and then they have to come to us to discuss the value of the land.
Okay. And then we could have a, an appraiser or someone come up with a fair. And then we could have a an appraiser or someone come up with a fair market value?
Yeah, that they will appraise it and come to us with the value and we'll decide whether or not we want to get an additional additional appraisal. Point 12 acres adjacent to Brownsville Road at the back of someone's property. I suspect doesn't have significant value, but it does have some.
And it's probably in a flood plain, but like you said, it's worth something. Okay. Um, any other questions, Ed or or Deb or Sue?
No.
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 Okay. Um, then we would need a motion to adopt resolution 2020-18, accepting that offer of the dedication of that point 112 parcel of land along Brownsville Road as a motion to do that.
I'll make that motion. Ed Shannon.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Shannon. Second?
I'll second it, Deb Kaplan.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Miss Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next up, item four, appointment of Catherine Han to the library board for a term ending January 2023. I understand the library board out of vacancy. Ms. Han had expressed interest and submitted a letter of interest with her qualifications um, for that position. Um, so we would need, I don't know if anyone has any questions or any discussion about that?
No.
No.
Okay. So if there's if there isn't any questions or any matter to be discussed, we would need a motion then to um, appoint Ms. Han to that open position on the library board for a period of time that would end on January 2023. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made. By Ms. Kaplan. A second?
I'll second that, Susan Cummings.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings. I'm sorry to. Seconded by Ms. Cummings. Uh, so we'll go down the line. So Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. Also, motion passes. Um, next up is item number five, appointment of a public works director. Um, if I could just give a short preface on that, um, at the last meeting, um, if anyone heard it, um, the board of voted to terminate the employment of the public works director um, that's here at the time. And that time, in fact, before that, we had had an we have an assistant public works director, Mr. Mark McDonald. I believe, uh, Mr. Goud, though, if you want to give a synopsis of Mr. McDonald's qualifications and the job he's been doing in the interim?
Yeah, not as assistant public works director, but as more as the temporary basically public works director, Mark is according to that role. No problem. Um, Mark Mark comes with a long history, having worked in the Cheltenham Township for uh, well over, I believe, 30 years, uh, working his way up in his career from uh, from the lower part of the hiring poll all the way to as a the superintendent, basically running the public works department for a large municipality. Uh, we're lucky to have Mark with us, uh, serving in the temporary capacity. Uh, with the opening right now, um, we would like to make the appointment for Mark uh, to serve as the public works director for Lower Southampton Township.
Now, Mr. Goud, this would would this be taking on any additional salary or would this just be replacing the salary of the public works director that we terminated at the last meeting?
It basically he's getting the same salary that he was hired as temp as the as the temporary public works person. So right now, I believe it's at 97 and that's where it would stay at it. The hiring would not cost any more in salary.
Okay, and it's I think it's the board's understanding too that Mr. McDonald has his own hospitalization benefits?
That is correct. That's what I've been told.
Okay, so the township wouldn't be on the hook for that at this time, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't know if any other board members have any.
The only the only we have is his pension, right? Which would be a small amount?
Yep, there would be a contribution for the pension component. Yep.
Okay.
Which which is basically like a 401K what we have, Ed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cummings or Mr. Kuts?
Yeah, yeah. Joe, uh, real quick question. Uh, Ray had just mentioned health insurance as of this time. I just want to make sure I understand. You had said Mr. McDonald will have health insurance from his previous employer indefinitely and we will never be on the hook. You know, for the health insurance, correct? That's how it was explained to us earlier?
That's how I understand it. I mean, the only person that could actually, I'm I'm not Mark, so uh, Mark could actually speak to that part as far as his healthcare costs uh, going into a future period of time. To my knowledge, I I believe it's, you know, until basically infinity, but may maybe I'm wrong. But Mark, can you speak on that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that that is correct. I do have the benefits indefinitely.
Okay.
Thank you. Great.
Thanks, Mark.
I don't need yours. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any other questions from the board members?
Uh, I'm well, I know he's been doing a wonderful job taking over with the public works department.
So we need a motion.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint Mark McDonald as the the public works director of Lower Southampton Township?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Shannon's made the motion. A second?
I'll second, Deb Kaplan.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll go down. Roll call. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. Um, so the motion passes with a vote of 5-0 and congratulations, Mr. McDonald. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Just Ray, before you go on to the manager's report, I had to step away at the beginning of the meeting. I assume I would just want to make sure you did announce that we had the executive sessions.
I announced that we had the executive sessions both on May 4th and on May 13th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so that's the last that's the last item on the agenda. If we could move on to the manager's report, Mr. Goud?
Sure. All right, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. Um, as far as the sanitation rebate, they run, of course, to June 1st. As of uh, the end of yesterday, there were 735 issues. Um, Chairman Weldy mentioned also the polling place as far as the one that was, I believe it was one division that was in the Township Administration Building that had been relocated to the former district court, so we'll have signage out there. Um, and then the other component, as far as of 4:30, we got a slight update as far as the unemployment claims dealing with township residents. In the prior two weeks, it's gone up about almost close to 300, let's say. Uh, right now, we're nearing about 3,300 residents that are unemployed. With with that being the case, um, and businesses being shut down under the governor's direction, uh, you know, of course, there's going to be some financial ripple effect. Um, you will have implications on the real estate transfer tax, EIT tax, which is like the local wage tax earnings. Uh, since you have 3,300 people that are now unemployed, you would lose those earned incomes uh, showing as a tax. Also, you would have probably a declining American town business privilege tax as well as the LST, which is your local service tax, which is basically a $10 tax uh, for any individual who holds a holds a job within our tax jurisdiction. So we would have a decrease in there. Um, and and the impacts are going to be kind of resound. Um, as you know, in our operating fund, which is our general fund, that basically alone is 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 well over a $12 million fund. The real estate tax component, uh, we only get basically 7% of the total real estate pie in there is about maybe about a million dollars. So a lot of the taxes or the the fees that we accumulate in a given year um, helps pay for that 11 other million dollars that we have to come up with. So our operating fund being impacted, therefore then we would have other impacting uh, issues. Um, most, let's say it this way, as far as the the given year, it will be a challenging year. We're going to try to mitigate whatever exposure that we have so that we can uh, at least mitigate a a small, if it is a deficit, that we kind of uh, make it a a small, more palatable item. Uh, we do have fund balance. We're going to attempt to use fund balance to cover uh, as best as we can, but we also have fiduciary responsibilities with that. We may have to have a reallocation of our personnel assets. Um, and this may not be a one-time event. This may be of uh, maybe a second or a third round if needed, uh, depending on where our revenue structure it goes in this given in this given fiscal year. And most likely will impact the 2021 budget also. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of those circumstances. Um, it's it's kind of a difficult job. Um, nobody, nobody kind of budgets or plans for these type of scenarios. Uh, but this is something that we're going to we're going to get by with and we're going to live through. Uh, so but that's basically on the the budget impacts. As far as uh, some other items that were spoken at today's commissioner meeting commissioners, uh, meeting Bucks County. Uh, Ray touched base on it. We're they're going to be creating a small business program grant, uh, $6 million in funding. It will kind of follow up the Chester County plan. Small businesses basically would have to supply financials. It's not meant for franchisees or passive businesses like uh, you owning the real estate investments. Um, and I believe it goes up to 25,000 per business. They mentioned an economic recovery task force and how businesses would operate uh, under the yellow scenario, whether the and whether they can legitimately open uh, under this yellow scenario too. So I mean, not only will they be impacted on their revenue side, but whether they could actually operate as a business per se. Uh, the commissioners were waiting on a call uh, this week from the governor's office as well as the Department of Health. Um, hopefully, uh, with getting a date or obtaining a date from the the governor's office with regard to a potential opening up of the county. Uh, lastly, uh, they mentioned, um, I guess the Department of Health that on Sunday, we had a zero spread in the in the Bucks County community and right now, given this particular week, we're in the single single digits as far as community spread. So hopefully the mitigation efforts are are working. Uh, and you know, and now it's kind of turned, I guess, to turn this spigot on, so to speak, as far as the business aspect and try to get back to a little bit of normalcy. Um, so but that's basically it. Uh, the one other item they did mention as far as the election, they're encouraging mail-in ballots. They'll be going out this week. So if you haven't gotten it, it'll be coming out this week and they projected around 50,000 that would be going out mail-in ballots. Uh, all precincts will be open. They'll be doing a spraying in the buildings respectively. Uh, they will be providing these various kits. Um, and the virus, so to speak, as for the polling people and the people, the residents coming in if they're do if they're voting the old fashioned way. Um, and and basically that that's it. As far as here internally, what we're trying to do is we'll probably be getting ready in the next week or so to do do more of a soft opening, um, letting residents sort of come back into the into the foyer area. Right now, what we would be doing or we're working on is um, uh, basically a scheduler system that would be on the internet uh, where people could reach out to their respective department head and set up an appointment, whether they do a face chat or whether the person wanted to come into the building. Um, they would of course have to, you know, have a mask. Uh, they would have their temperature taken also. Um, and we would kind of keep everything in that foyer area specifically. Um, so as to mitigate any type of exposure, whether it be for the resident or whether it be for the employee. So we would eventually be going to sort of a soft opening in the in the near future. And that's that.
Do you have a date for that, Joe?
Um, I I would probably say I I'd like to roll it out probably in about two weeks. Um, uh, but right now, uh, right, I want to make sure the scheduler, uh, we're testing it right now. And we want to make sure that everything's a go there first before we do the soft open. So we're working with a technology company that's helping us with that at no cost to the township. So uh, hopefully that turns out into a a good good vehicle for us.
So possibly the beginning of June?
Yes.
Thank you.
Deb Kaplan, I have a question, Joe. With the meeting with the commissioners, did they talk about um, the numbers for the nursing homes?
No, they did not mention that part. They didn't. They didn't have their that. They didn't give any updates on that part. And that that may be happening, maybe in Ryan's meetings uh, in the fire marshal's office with the Department of Health and all. But the the commissioners meeting only spoke about those particular items this given week.
Okay.
Joe, can you um, can you give the statement from the meeting today about the sanitation of the buildings before the voting would take place in each building?
Sure. Um, I believe the way they there's a there is an order to it, the way they kind of spelled it out. Hold on one second. Um, basically what they're going to start off is they're going to start with the uh, two days before the election, they would come in with a sanitation program, which is uh, I believe some sort of Mr. Program, a peroxide program. Um, they would do our building, the municipal buildings, and then eventually go to the churches, the firehouses. And then lastly, the schools, because the schools are closed right now. So that's how they would attack it and go after that. And then two days after the elect back and re-sanitize those respective buildings. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, is Ryan here? Is Ryan here at the meeting?
Ryan? Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Ryan, Deb Kaplan.
Hey.
When you when you met with the um, emergency services, was there any talk about our nursing homes? And the COVID numbers in our nursing homes?
Uh, not the official number, just that they call us when there's the first case and that is it. They won't release exactly how many uh, are in there.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Well, did you? I'm just curious. Did they say they won't release it? Was it S and they said they won't release it? Or was it just not mentioned?
Oh, yeah, it's it's just the health department is not releasing the total numbers for any of the nursing homes.
Okay. Thank you. Did they give a reason?
Uh, they did not. I can see if I can find out one.
I thank you.
It's it, Deb, it may be the same thing where you had um, some counties where they didn't identify what municipalities had what infected people with the numbers were. So they might be holding on to that information. Um, you know, for fear of some form of backlash, some or something like that. But they they've done that in the past, so.
I know, but I thought I was under the impression that they were changing that, changing that um, procedure, but I'll look more into that. Thank you so much, Deb.
Okay. And that's that's all I have for today today's meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, next up would be supervisors' comments. Ms. Ms. Cummings?
Excuse me, I thought Joe was going to bring up the issue of certain people have asked to be able to get a refund from the rec programs.
That is, yeah, that actually you are correct on that one. My apologies. My apologies. That's actually listed on the manager's report too. I'm sorry. Um, and Matt Matt mentioned this earlier. Um, recreation received the the recreation department received a few requests. I believe it was around 10 from various parents. Um, and what they were looking for tonight is kind of permission from the board or approval tonight to kind of tweak our refund policy for the COVID scenario. The current policy, according to Matt, states that there is no refunds. Uh, we think it's only fair that during these COVID times that to process those refunds. So as long as there's an approval process and substantiation of documents are generated by the recreation department. So we will look for an approval uh, for that tonight for those small amount of refunds.
Yeah, I think that I think that policy is under normal conditions. You know, this was a seen event. Um, do we need a vote on that, Frank, or can we just?
Yeah, I think you should have a vote on if you just somebody will make a motion.
Okay, so then is there would anyone like to make a motion to revise the refund policy for the summer camp program for this year due to the circumstances that we're currently under?
I'll make that motion. Ed Shannon?
Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Shannon to revise the refund policy. Is there a second? Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Shannon to revise the refund policy. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Deb Kaplan.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll go down roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and this is Ray Weldy. I would vote in favor of that motion also. So that motion to revise the refund policy for the summer camp program for this year is approved with a vote of five nothing. Thank you.
And if I could just add this, an example of how we can rewrite policies in the future. When something like, you know, when something like an emergency, like a pandemic or any national emergency, refunds can take place. I think that that this is going to possibly change the way we write policies and procedures.
Thank you, Deb.
Ray, can I, can I just make one? Can I have the?
Sure.
Absolutely. Okay, I'd just like to talk about the parade for a moment. We're already getting some money in for the parade. That's what, that's how we make the money to run the parade. But with the, with the restrictions that we're having, we have to make a decision very shortly about whether we're going to have the parade or not. It's not a financial issue. We have enough money in the parade, the parade bankbook to be able to run the parade. But the restrictions on the number of people and so on, right now, I don't think we could do it. We wouldn't get a, an exception for that. So anyway, I'm not asking for a vote. It's just we'll have to start thinking about that, and we can come back with a recommendation shortly. All right?
Thank you. Who would make that call? Is it the board or was, does the parade committee make that call?
Well, the parade committee has made those decisions in the past. Just about every time we need a new band or we need somebody new or we need to raise some more money. You know, that's currently, we have plenty of money in the parade bankbook. So, yeah.
Is the parade an official, officially run by the township or by the parade committee, which is a whole separate organization?
It's run by the township. This is a committee within the township.
Okay.
But ultimately, will the decision be made by, you know, by the county by not having something?
Well, they, they may have the decision, they may come up with enough rules and regulations that we can't run the parade. That's going to have to be our, our decision, I believe.
Well, I think it depends on what zone we're in. I mean, if we're in the red zone in July, then that's the governor's call and whether the county stays, depending even if the county becomes in the yellow zone, we still can't have it.
Well, it depends what the regulations are at that time when we make the decision.
Right.
And right, right now, we're in the red zone until June the fourth, which is only a month before the parade.
Correct.
So I don't know what the likelihood is of us being elevated to a zone where we could even hold it.
Yeah.
And that's not the yellow zone.
We have some other things that need to be done anyway, because we have, that's where we get our funding from businesses. The local businesses, but that wouldn't be our issue this time. It would be the, the number of people that can be in in any area at whatever time. That would be more, it's a township decision, I'm sure.
Well, on May twenty-seventh, two weeks from tonight, maybe we'll have a bit of a clearer idea where this is going.
Right. And we were collecting some money and with, from people that always contribute. And we just got to make a decision whether we're going to give that back or not for this, for this year.
And, and when, when do you want the, why would you want the decision made by?
Well, any, anytime soon, because we have to do mailings to the political business people. There's a thousand business people in Lower South. And randomly, it typically costs us about twenty-five thousand dollars to come to the parade. But that's really not our issue today. It's how many people are going to come and how many people are we allowed to have come to the parade in addition to the participants in the parade, so.
So I think what you're saying is next meeting, you're going to have to make a decision.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Frank always has a way of clearing things up.
There is that, you know?
Yeah. Are we okay to move on to supervisors' comments?
I guess, yeah, for me.
Sue?
Ted?
Did Ted want to say something?
I don't know.
I think he just woke up.
Well, as always, Lower Southampton seems to always pull through the, you know, the community just comes together in times like this. We've had some, we've had an outpouring of kindness from people from making masks and, you know, donating food. I have a list of, you know, a few names that I'd like to read off if I'm sure that if anybody's, you know, watching or somebody can let others know. I'm sure, I'm sure there's many others, but here's just a few. There was some, there was donations by Nancy's Nails, by Sunflower Nails, by Hot Green Tea, by National Restoration, Anthony at Village Pantry, nails by Lindsay, Action Karate, as well as Beth Kane, Linda Grul, Jen Emrich. Hopefully, I pronounced all their names right, and they are students at middle, at Maple Point Middle School, who, who also donated masks. And I want to applaud them as well as others in the community that, you know, possibly I don't have some names for that have really pulled together and come through in this time. And we can't forget about the food drive that our Fire Marshal has set up, beginning on, well, beginning yesterday. It had started, and I want to congratulate or welcome Mark McDonald for our Public Works Director as well as Catherine Hahn and to our library board and everyone safe out there. Thank you.
Can I, can I have another second? Chief, how do you think the Pollocky Farm meeting is, is working from your perspective?
No problems.
No problems. Okay, good. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going tomorrow. I'll let you know. I'm going to go off tomorrow.
Thanks, Sue. Deb?
Um, thank you. I just want to say continued condolences to the loved ones of those who died from COVID nineteen. Also, as always, thank yous go to all, all the essential workers, the medical workers, the first responders, all the volunteers, and our township team, as well as dedicated service to our community. And thank you to the residents for continuing to be efforts. You continue with the CDC requirements. Our library is offering a wide range of programs for adults and children. This week for children, there's a pet, a pet pass, I think it's called a pet pass time. Send a picture and or a short story about your pet. And for adults, there's a Zoom meeting for book club. So please visit Feasterville Library Facebook page for information on all activities that are going on at our library. And you can even fill out your census form online at the Lower Southampton Township Library website. And our library staff is doing amazing work connecting to our residents through library stay-at-home activities. And I also want to congratulate Mark for our new director as public works and also the new library board member, Catherine Hahn. Congratulations to you both, and again, welcome to the team and look forward to working with you both. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Kim?
Yeah, you know, I also wanted to add to that list that Susan had brought up about our residents and a few other non-residents who have donated to the township. Flagship, Flagship Medical, Family Dollar, Ed Carlson, Erica, Erica Reynolds, the Shwarma House, Michelle Laquilla. I also wanted to give recognition once again to Anthony from Village Pantry. I know he's been donating some food to St. Mary's Hospital. So that's a great thing. And and lastly, too, how about a story of three of our residents, Dan Wurzani, Victor Corsino, and Steve Castle, that made national news last week with their generosity and their big hearts when hot meals and groceries were dropped off at a customer of Castle's Lawn Center. The recipient was so touched by these three men, she had to call her daughter, who just so happened to be a New York City author. The, the daughter started telling her story. Nowadays, with social media, it's spread like wildfire, went across the country. There are three names were mentioned by most of the news, news agencies, and and they've even been asked to appear on some talk shows. So that is just such a great thing. Job well done, men, and job well done to anybody who'd actually tried to help anybody out during this situation we're all in. And that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Shannon, Ed?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted, the volunteers, I mean, you got to love those people. They're out there all the time doing the right things for the right reasons. And they have big hearts and so on. I want to welcome Mark as, as I've seen some of the work he's done. He's doing a great job, and we want to thank him for that. And I hope for a long time, for a long time. Chief Pollocky is working well, and that's, that's great to hear. It was a little bit of an effort to get it open, but it's working, and I've been by there a number of times, and it seems to be working pretty well. Not, not on the township effort, but the golf outing for the Feasterville Business Association doesn't look like that's going to take place this year either. I run that, and we had July twelfth this year, and it's probably going to go to July twelfth and twenty-one. It won't be going this year, so we won't have the contributions to the organizations that normally get money from, from the Feasterville Business Association. Thank you.
Ed, can I ask you a question about the, the golf outing?
Yes.
With the golf being back open, I know there was, you know, there's still many restrictions on that. Is that something that you would maybe consider, like pushing to the fall and in having it this year? Is that?
Well, the, the, the one with that is that the golf, the golf course, Spring Hill, we've already given them a deposit, which we had to do. With the restrictions that we have, you have one person per cart. Well, there's no golfers around that has a hundred and fifty golf carts sitting around somewhere. Because less than fifty-five dollars just to rent. So that's not going to work very well. It is golf. We can play golf, but the, they, everybody else has been already transferring to another time. And I talked to the, to the golf pro over the weekend, and everybody's moved to a, to the, to the fall. And there's just no space for us in the fall right at the point. Now, that, that could open up, because some people might cancel for the following year also. We got that conversation going, but typically, that's, I shouldn't say typically, that's probably a long shot for to get it. We don't, but I don't think we can make it. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I won't mention the same names over and over. There are so many, hundreds of people in a township this small, hundreds, maybe literally thousands have stepped up to help out their neighbors, their friends, their relatives, and and everyone throughout the township, especially with unemployment the way it is. One name I will mention, it's been mentioned twice, is Anthony at Village Pantry. He, like, has been mentioned. He's, he's donated meals to St. Mary's Hospital, Holy Redeemer Hospital. And he mentioned on Sunday to me that his next round of donations is going to go to some frontline workers that are performing COVID nineteen tests out at the work site. So if anyone would like to stop by and support Anthony in that endeavor, feel free. And the other name I'd like to mention is our tax collector, Debbie Doniger. Debbie worked diligently with the township manager and with the Board of Supervisors to put together the resolution that was passed tonight to offer our residents a discount period and an extension and a penalty period to at least offer that some slight relief in everyone's financial woes. So thank you, Debbie, and thank you, Anthony. And with that being said,
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I didn't mention something, since you mentioned Village Pantry, the Feasterville Rotary donated money to, to the Village Pantry to donate food to St. Mary's medical workers.
That's great. That's great. And I think he took up a hundred or a hundred and twenty hoagies up there to to donate recently. So that's, that's a great thing that they're doing. Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing further, it's time to adjourn a meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Shannon's made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Kim?
Yes.
Okay, second by Mr. Kutsaratus. Roll call, Ms. Cummings?
Don't get that rumor started.
Ms. Cummings, yes. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, and this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes to adjourn. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all, and we'll see you on May twenty-fifth.
Thanks for talking, everybody.
Have a good night. Be safe. Wash your hands.
Peter, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Goodbye.
Good night. Hang up. Wait, here it is. Hang up.
Hang up.